I don't think I changed yet. You ready?
I'd just like to welcome everybody to the night, to the July 12, 2021 City Council meeting. I'm going to call the City Council meeting to order. Could you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Second.
Motion made. Second discussion. Follows in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. Item number four, presentations and public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Acting Mayor. The East Bethel City Council is considering renewal of Midco's cable franchise agreement with the city. City staff recommends that the East Bethel City Council conduct a public hearing to provide an opportunity for city residents to comment on the proposed cable franchise agreement. With that, staff recommends City Council open the public hearing.
At this time, I will open the Midco Cable Franchise Agreement Public Hearing. Is there anybody that'd like to come and speak? Please come up to the mic, give your name and address and...
Karen Creppis, 23050 Gopher Drive Northeast. I admit I haven't read the agreement, but I live on a stretch of road where we do not have Midco cable. And my only option is satellite internet. And having worked from home since a year ago March, satellite internet is really expensive. And I certainly hope that whatever companies propose for putting an internet service provider, see Bethel, I hope that they're able to service all the residents of East Bethel, because this is ridiculous. And I'm really, like to be hopeful that some things will change, because I don't want to have to keep paying through the nose to my internet, because I'm going to be a hybrid worker. And I would like to have some better internet options on the street where I live. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Anybody else like to speak? Well, then I'll close the public hearing. Item B, potentially dangerous dog hearing. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I was going to announce we do have two Midco representatives in the audience, Michelle Wolf and Jason Sacks.
I'm sorry.
So you might want to talk to Karen a little bit out in the lobby and give her some information. So if you all have anything to say too, you're more than welcome to get up to the podium and...
I know one of the... I'm Jason Sacks with Midco.
I'm Melissa Wolf with Midco.
I know one of the questions that was posed was where are we extending and what are we doing? I know that was one of the ones that you had talked to Pat about. So I did a map. You had sent the map. You guys have probably all seen this one. It's just a very basic coverage area. All the areas that are actually highlighted on there that we were looking at, we actually have plans for all of them, except for one right now. So I'm just going to pass this out, because I actually have some dates on here, and I can explain. Explain where we're going. Sorry. Still recognize the area.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, this does not mean that there's not areas left within here that aren't covered, because part of what's not on that other map, it doesn't necessarily mean we didn't design it. This area does not have the density. We may not have designed it or looked at it. So if there's, the cable franchise reads that we are required to build any area that has 25 homes per cable mile, essentially per mile. So there are areas, I know specifically, like Blue River and Pine, this golf park, we don't go down that dirt road, because there are not 25 homes per mile down that road. So those are not designed on this map. But if I can quick explain this map, if you see the blue areas that are circled, those are projects that are currently in place for this year, with tentative launch dates in August and in July. The one in the far upper left-hand corner is going to be later in 2021. I don't have a specific date. That actually goes and is a much bigger project that also goes into the city of Bethel, and it's kind of combined, because it crosses the border there. But that's one that's going to happen later this year also. The only one on this map, that is on the map that you have showing our coverage areas that we are not currently planning on doing, is the far bottom of the sheet where it's circled in red. And that's, again, a density thing. The cost per home, per lot is roughly $4,000 to $5,000, which is over what we would normally do. That doesn't mean we won't do it. But what we've had to do with some of our other cities, like Lynwood Township, Columbus, is, and it's actually written into the franchise agreement, that if you're willing to help partner with us, we will build those areas that have a higher cost, even though they don't meet the density requirements. So, but this map shows, and if you look at the green ones, I didn't put notes by those, those are active. Those, those we did last year or beginning of this year, they're already active systems. Those were all areas that were originally on that map shaded in orange. So those are already done. So we've actually made really good progress over the last two years of covering some of the other ones that we've looked at. And we will absolutely look at any other projects. And we can talk to you outside and see where you're at and see if it falls into any of these areas, or how close it is. We can talk to you about that outside.
Jason, I know that the cable franchise agreement doesn't deal with internet. But when you do the cable extensions, do you also extend fiber or internet service along with that?
So that's correct. Technically, the franchise agreement that we're asking to be passed is specifically for cable TV only. That said, everywhere we extend, we will be also be offering internet and phone service. And some of our newer developments, some of these ones in blue are going to be a mix of fiber to the curb, which isn't necessarily fiber to the home, but we bring it to a spot and then we still use coax from there. Some of our brand-new ones, the one that's got the tentative launch date in later 2021, that will actually be fiber to the home, or fiber to the premise. So, and we will continue to upgrade our networks as we do that.
And just to add on to that, the blue areas that have tentative launches of this summer, that is about 168 homes that we're hitting this summer that will be connecting, and they will all have access to gig speeds.
Just a comment on my part. I do have Midco, and I live right off of 22. I would like to see everybody in East Bethel be able to have access to cable television and internet, because today is so important to have that to everybody.
Absolutely.
And I just have a comment too. You guys just put the lines in the ground in my neighborhood. I'm off Wild Rice. And there's 18 homes there, but I'll tell you what, they're all looking. I think every one of them's switching. Because like Karen said, the prices on everything else is going crazy. So we're actually looking forward to it. So thanks a lot.
That's great to hear. And I know Jason already mentioned this, but if there's any ever, ever any areas that you guys want us to look into that, you know, don't, you know, as we did in the past, that don't currently have service, and if there's a way that we can, you know, work together with the city on getting there, you know, we're, we're going to have a conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd like to say that Melissa and Jason have been very responsive to everything the city's sent in. They may not always say yes, but they've worked with us very well, and we really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So I do have a question. For residents that are not on the minimum house-per-mile streets and won't get hooked up until a question mark time, do you offer any alternatives for them to be able to get internet?
We could, and this actually might be a better question for Jason, but if, I mean, if they reach out and we can look into, you know, what it would take to get there, I mean, we can do an aid of construction if residents are willing to kind of pay for us to get there. We certainly can look into that, yeah.
Okay, but...
Are you asking like alternate, like service delivery?
Alternate service to delivery technologies, wireless, something that would be a Band-Aid in the meantime?
In this area, our solution is a wired solution.
Okay.
We don't have a different solution for those areas.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's try this again.
Okay.
Potentially getting a dangerous dog here in surgery.
Thank you, Tim. The request for the hearing, for a potentially dangerous dog hearing, relates to a bite injury incident that occurred on June the 9th, 2021. The Inoka County Sheriff's Office reported that a chocolate lab dog owned by Dan Forsland approached in a threatening manner and bent the alloy at 2246 Viking Boulevard. Since the incident was unprovoked and not under control by the owner, and as reported and cited by the deputy, as a potentially dangerous dog pursuant to Chapter 10 of the city code based on the incident report, a potentially dangerous dog notice was issued relating to this incident. Mr. Forsland's dog was licensed at the time of the incident and was current on its rabies vaccinations. Potentially dangerous dog means that any dog, when unprovoked, inflicts a bite on a human or domestic animal on public or private property, when unprovoked chases or approaches a person, including a person on a bicycle, upon the streets, sidewalk, or any public or private property, other than the dog owners in an apparent attack, attitude of attack, or has a known propensity, tendency, or disposition to attack unprovoked, causing injury or otherwise threatening the safety of humans and other domestic animals. The owner, Mr. Forsland, has submitted a written request to appeal the decision of the potentially dangerous dog declaration. Pursuant to City Code, Chapter 10, Article 2, Dog, Section 1072, an animal owner is allowed to contest a potentially dangerous dog determination. In this case, Dan Forsland, the animal's owner, has requested the hearing before council. City Council pursuant to Section 1072 has several options regarding this matter. They will conduct a hearing allowing the owner to present reasons why the potentially dangerous dog determination should be removed, and if the dangerous dog determination is sustained, identify the action to be taken. And if the potentially dangerous dog determination is not sustained, make a determination that the animal is to be released without any further action from or by the City Council. Staff recommends that City Council conduct a hearing relating to the potentially dangerous dog determination and issue a decision regarding this incident pursuant to City Code, Chapter 10, Article 2, Dog, Division 3, and any requirements for keeping of the animal.
Well, open the hearing for the dangerous dog. Does either party involved like to get up and speak, Mr. Forsland or Mr. Delwell? Either gentleman want to come to the microphone and speak? Could you please state your name and address for the records, please?
My name is Apple Ben Diallo, 1250 on the Second Avenue Northeast, Greatland, Minnesota, 5543. So on the, it was on June 8th while I was driving on my way from work at my five-time job and passing right before...
Can you put the speaker closer to your mouth, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
So on June 8th, while driving on my way from work in the morning hours, I passed, I drove past Mr. Forsland's house, and I saw him with a vehicle right out there for sale, and he was standing right by it. And I stopped by and asked him how much he was selling the car, and he told me $600. And I told him I needed it, I wanted it. So I negotiated with him, but we did not finalize the transaction on that day. So we decided that we should meet the following morning on June 9th, so that we could be able to finalize the transaction, pay him the money, and then take the vehicle. So we planned to meet the following morning at 9:30. I stopped by, I met him, and we went to the office to do the paperwork, I paid him the money, and then he gave me the car keys and told me, hey, later you can stop by and get the car. So I told him, well, hopefully by 3:00 PM, between 9:00 and 3:00 PM, if I have the time, because I was driving my car, so I couldn't drive both cars. So I decided I could come with someone else to enable me to pick up the vehicle. So when I got there, I don't remember exactly the time, I think around like anywhere between 11:00 and 12:00 PM. When I got in the yard, the vehicle was parked, because he told me, whenever you come, you can just grab the car and go. By then, he has already given me the keys. So when I stopped there, we parked right on the main road. And then just within our time, he, oh, he came out of his house with his two dogs, and immediately he opened the door and came out. By then, I was walking towards the vehicle, and the dog just started running, coming to me, and then I backed off, and then went back on the main road. But before I could come there, the dog just jumped on me and bit me on my, on my left eye, tore my jeans off. And then that's how I, I stood right there, and he was coming, asking, I said, but you saw the dog coming to me. You should have at least called the dog instead of allowing it to come and hurt me. So he came, he said, well, the dog was just trying to protect its property. So I said, okay. So at that point, I said, can I get the vehicle? He said, yes. And then he, he was able to control the dog. And then I went and picked up the car, and then I went straight to the hospital to get treatment. I just moved here like two years ago. I didn't even know I had to call 911. So while at the ER, the doctor asked me what happened, and I explained to him, and he said, well, you have to call 911 and report it. So I said, okay. And then I called 911, and then I reported it. And then someone contacted me within that same time and asked that, I explained what happened, and then I explained. And then I went home, took three days off to go and get my treatment. And while at the hospital, he sent me a text and asked me, say, hey, did you go to the hospital? I said, yes. I said, I'm at the hospital right now. I'm at the ER. And he said, what happened? I said, well, I'm still seeking treatment. I said, but they would need your name and, you know, and your address. And he texted it to me, and also texted me the dog tag, letting me know that the dog was saved, and they didn't have rabies. So I shouldn't fear anything. So I said, okay. And then from there, I went home. And then Don contacted me that he wanted me to appear here today for a hearing.
Any questions?
Did the dog approach you in a threatening manner, or did it just run up to you and, oh, look, it's biting me?
Yes. It approached me in a very threatening manner. It was barking and running towards me, and that's how I, I backed off towards the main road, and it still kept coming. But then he was walking, coming towards us with the other dog. And then I, by the time I could get back on the main street, it just jumped on me. And I went like this, and then it grabbed me by my tie, tore my jeans off, and just tore a piece of my skin off. And then I started to bleed, and then I, I backed off.
Any other questions? Well, thank you. Mr. Forsland, do you...
Dan Forsland, 2246 Viking Boulevard. At the time, I did have the top sign on that you require by the, about the underground fencing and stuff. And I've added, added the other ones around the yards and stuff, just to help with the situation. I won't go through the same thing about buying the car and stuff like that, because you've already heard it. But we did agree, he said 3:30, which was fine. That's when I expected him to come and get the car. So when he's there at 1:00, and I'm not aware of it, and I take the dogs out to play, this is a surprise to everybody. So when I let the dogs out, yes, Ranger, he ran around the side, and he saw this guy halfway to my wife's car. Therefore, he's just protecting his property in my wife's car. Ben turned around and ran, which not probably a good thing to do with a dog, because he's going to, the game is on. And he took a bite, and he did rip his shorts, or his jeans. I don't know how, I don't know if there was a puncture wound or not, or if it was just a scrape. You'd have to verify that for me. My dog took one snap and backed off. He got to the fence and stopped right in his tracks. He didn't pursue him any further. I called him off, said, it's okay, it's okay. We got everything situated. So. One thing is, right away, when Ben was looking at the vehicle in the first day, he was afraid of the dog. I knew he was afraid of the dog. So I told Ranger, stay back, just settle down, and everything was okay that day. We were just fine. Why Ben didn't call me ahead of time and say, hey, I'm coming to pick up the car early, I don't know. That would have been so much easier. I could have kept the dogs in. Everything would have been good. You know, I think if Ben would just stayed still, Ranger would have come up and barked at him, barked at him. I would have said, no, it's, everything's okay, and would have, would have been fine. He would have been just fine with everybody, because he's been that way with FedEx, the mailman, garage sales, the police officer that came to make the report. She's not here, but the animal control, he was all fine with all of them. He always has been. We've always done everything up, up, up. We kept the dogs, rabies, shots, tags, license every year. I've got two dogs. I've always had dogs. This is, this is disturbing to me, actually. You know, I don't like to see it, but element of surprise. A dog's going to do what he's going to do, protect his property. I kind of, you know, wish it hadn't happened that way, but a simple phone call to let me know he would have been coming would have solved all kinds of problems. Precautions now. I've put up more signs around the yard. We plan on putting up a solid fence across the whole front yard. I'm doing this to protect my dog, not necessarily everybody else. I don't want anybody else walking in uninvited, you know, and surprise everybody. I've got more signs around I'm going to be putting up. I'm also thinking about, I might as well try to put fencing across the front of the house kind of way, so I can keep the dogs in the backyard when nobody's around. It's very unfortunate. I'm very sorry for that. Ranger's not, he's an excitable dog, and he likes to let us know that people are around, and that's a good thing. It's just a surprise to everybody and unfortunate circumstances that the reaction was that quick. You know, but like I say, he didn't, he took one snap at him, but he didn't really go after him, go after him, go after him. So, anything else, son? Okay. So if I'm open to any, any suggestions you have that could help me, help us out in this situation, and I'd like to hear about them from you. Thank you.
I'll close the hearing. Is there, opening up to the council, thoughts?
I just have one question. So your dog stayed in the perimeter of your yard.
He has never left the dog fence near you. He knows the character of the premises.
So he never crossed the fence to pursue him? Okay.
I personally don't think this should be deemed a dangerous dog, because it was on his property. I was surprised. It does exactly what dogs are supposed to do. If somebody came on my property, across my dog's fence, I'm sure my dog might bite him too. I think even big dogs, little dogs. I don't think it's, I, I think it should be just totally dismissed, and I'm sorry this happened to you, sir, but I, I just think that's what dogs do. They protect their owners. And it wasn't like he, what, this gentleman was there early. It was, it was a surprise to everybody. So, and the dog, I, I think the owner, dog owner is, sounded very responsible. He's licensed, he's given him shots. He's got, had to sign up anyway. So unsuspecting people coming into people's yards with dogs. I'm glad he has a sign up, but I don't, the words aren't coming, but I don't think it should be deemed a dangerous dog. That's my opinion.
I agree.
Go ahead, yeah.
I just wanted to make one thing clear. He mentioned that he had a sign at the front of the yard. That was not the case. And when I, there was no sign at all in the, on the, in his yard. If that sign was there, definitely I was not going to go in. When I tried, when I drove there two days later, that's how I thought. He had already placed two signs in the yard. That's number one. Number two, I asked him, before I come, do I need to call you? Or do you have to be there for me to get the car? He said, no. He said, you already have the keys. When you come, you can just grab the, you can just grab your key, I mean, your car and go. I do respect whatever the situation was, but I was just surprised that he mentioned that he had a sign, you know, in his yard. That was not the case. If he had told me, before you come, give me a call first, definitely I was going to do that. I just wanted to make that clear. But whatever decision you guys made, I'm 100% okay with it. But I just wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you.
And I, I'm going to comment to your point. I understand that, but he took, he was taking his dogs out before he expected you to be there. Therefore, he, I, dogs have to go out periodically during the day, and I'm sure he took it out at that time, because he didn't expect you to come until a later hour, maybe between 2:00 and 3:00, where he would have had the dogs in and contained. So I, I understand your point of view, but I totally understand his, and having a dangerous dog and may possibly having a dog put down for something like this, I, I just don't agree with it.
Any other questions? Is there a motion? We need a motion, or...
You'll need to take some action on this, whether to sustain the potentially dangerous dog declaration, modify it, or release it.
I'm going to make a motion to release the dangerous dog.
A second.
Motion made. Second discussion. I just want to say, I think Mr. Forsland's tried to do everything he could. I mean, the sign, everything I had circled, you've done. You know, you've got the license, you've got the rabies shots, so, I mean, I could commend you on that. So I'm kind of, I'm kind of the same way. So, like I said, I've got dogs in my neighborhood, they're the same way. They, they don't know you. They're going to bark, and they're going to run, but, you know, it's...
Yes, but very sorry that it did happen.
Absolutely.
Well, to the motion, all ones in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Booster Day presentation.
Thank you for coming in.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Yes, thank you.
I think this, this is for me. Stephanie sent a letter. I think everybody got this in their packet. East Bethel Booster Days was canceled in 2020 due to the COVID pandemic. There was an initial concern that the 2021 celebration would be canceled, but the notification of the lifting of restrictions for outdoor events in March provided just enough time for the Booster Day Committee to resurrect and scale back, or scale back format for the event. This year's fair will be a party in the park. Festivities will begin at 5:30 on Saturday, July 17th, at 2021 at Booster Park. We are excited to be joined this year by food vendors, including Smokey's, Barbecue Grumpy's, Mini Donuts, Burl Echo Ekbaum Concessions, and Scoops Ice Cream and Candy. We will also have Route 65 and Cedar East Bethel Lions with beer and other beverages. In addition to our food selections, we will have a variety of vendors selling their creations and sharing information, and a petting zoo for the kids. The prize for the medallion hunt, which begins today, will be awarded at the Party in the Park. Be sure to bring your lawn chairs, your picnic blankets, and find yourself a spot in the park to relax and enjoy the evening. Midwest Mayhem will be taking the stage at 6:30, and will play till the end of the fireworks display. Grab your friends, neighbors, and family, and come join us at the park. The city of East Bethel extends our gratitude and appreciation to Stephanie Dorn, event coordinator, for her tireless efforts to continue the Booster Day tradition. And I alone want to say thanks. Stephanie, Steve, and I'm trying to think, Carrie, they, they put in some time to get this thing together for what we got. And the big thing they, they'd like to say is, next year, if we can get some volunteers, because we've only got like three people plus... because we've only got like three people plus Suzanne and myself. If we could get a couple more people, we wanna, we oughta go big time next year, so. And that's all I've got. So with that, is there a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda, and I'd like to pull item D and F.
D and F. There a second?
A second.
Motion made, second. I wanna pull F2, but I'll, I'll go off Suzanne. On the remaining ones, all ones in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Item D.
Okay, item D. I just have a question. Item D is different than item C and E in that it's not signed. And I am curious as to why it's not signed. And the other problem I have with all of them is you can't read one signature. And I'm wondering if in the future, we could put a printed name by it though, because I think in the future, it could protect us if we know exactly who's signing that, should there be some kind of an audit or something, and somebody finds something wrong with them.
Are you talking about the pay request itself?
No, yeah, these are the three pay estimates. And you can't read one signature on all three of them, but pay estimate number three has, yeah, and D, the middle one, had no signature on it. And I'm just wondering why that one's different than the other ones that were signed.
Signature from the contractor or from the city?
From anybody.
We're, we're waiting for the approval. They have to be signed before we can pay it, though.
Okay, because the other ones were signed, and like, why is this one different?
I'm not sure why they weren't signed, but we, we can't approve it till it's signed by both parties. I mean, we can't pay it till it's assigned by both parties.
But we approve it anyways, even though they're not signed.
Correct, and then we'll get, we'll get the parties to sign that. But if we don't, you know, we're obligated to pay these within a certain amount of time. So we, we'll, we'll make sure they're perfectly executed before we issue a check.
Okay, I just, I just get uncomfortable when I see stuff coming up here and there's no signature on it. But then again, is it possible to put up where they can start printing their name on those instead of just a signature?
No, I, I don't know about people's signatures. It seems like more and more of them are doctor's signatures. They're very difficult to read, and some of them are, you know, unique to that person. We know who they belong to, but if it says signed, it has to be in cursive.
I know. Everything I see nowadays, you have to, I have to print my name and then sign, print my name and then sign. Why, why can't we put a printed name on there?
We, we, we can do that. We can put two lines on there, one for the printed name and one for the signature.
I, I'd like that. I just think it would protect the city and the future, if, if that's possible. And that's all I have. I'll make a motion to approve item D on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Motion made, second discussion. All ones in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item F.
I just wanna say, thank to Paul for his service, and I appreciate it. And I love our fire department, and I wish him best of luck in the future. That's all I have to say about him.
Oh, I do too. I, I've known Paul for a while. He'll be, he's a big asset. He'll be missed. He was, besides the firefighter, he was their, their safety officer down there, so. Whoever takes that job, it'll be some big shoes to fill, but I too wanna thank Paul for his service. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve. Item F is written.
A second.
Motion made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. No new business department reports?
Thank you. Tim, item 7.0, C1, Midco Cable Franchise Agreement. In 1989, the city entered into a 15-year cable franchise agreement with U.S. Cable Company. That agreement was renewed on June 21st, 2006. The term of that agreement was 15 years and is set to expire on July 21st, 2021. U.S. Cable's franchise was sold to Midcontinent Communications, Midco, in 2011. This sale was approved with the city council on September 21st of that year, and the terms, conditions, and provisions of the U.S. Cable franchise transferred to Midco. The city attorney has been in negotiations with Midco to provide an agreement that's acceptable to both parties for the renewal. And at this time, I will let the city attorney brief council on the proposed agreement that was prepared and sent to you on Friday. And he will be open for any questions on that. Chris?
Thank you, Jack. Council members, I know we've been talking about this agreement a lot lately, but we'll have to talk about it one more time, because it requires a public hearing, and then it will require approval at the next meeting, so bear, bear with us on it, but we can answer. I can answer any questions related to the agreement tonight. First, this is a reauthorization of the franchise. This isn't a new franchise. This is just allowing the Midco franchise to, to continue. As, as Jack said, we were on a 15-year franchise, which is expiring this month, and this continues that franchise largely on the same or similar terms, reflecting updates in the law since 2006, and also taking out some of the perhaps superfluous or unnecessary language in the previous franchise. As, as you can see from your packet, the, the previous franchise is quite lengthy. This one is a little bit more succinct. But that being said, I wanna walk through some of the key provisions. I, I know that the council had questions about where Midco was at in the build-out. We asked Midco to have representatives here tonight, and that's, you heard that discussion and have an updated map on that. We had, at our previous meeting, a discussion on franchise fees. I believe it was the wish of the council to sort of reevaluate those as the franchise goes along. You could absolutely lower the franchise fee at any point, and that decision can be made at, at any point by the council. One of the, the conversations that we've had specifically is related to density, and I know that's a, was a specific concern with regard to East Bethel. This continues the density on the previous term, which is 25 homes per cable mile for required installation. Again, that's a continuation of the previous term. It's also comparable to neighboring communities and the terms they have for cable expansion. One interesting provision, it was alluded to by one of the Midco representatives tonight, is this also allows for a cost share model when the density isn't met. So, for example, if there are 20 homes on a cable mile, instead of the 25, installation can be accomplished with Midco paying four fifths of that cost to recognize the, the fact that there's no density. The density requirement isn't meant to require Midco installation, but they'll pay 80% of those costs as part of it. Fairly standard provisions for a, a franchise agreement, they'll have to be providing insurance to cover the city in case anything would go wrong with right-of-way installation or things like that. And we've updated those numbers to provide further protections for the city. The city's providing access to its right-of-ways for installation of cable and necessary infrastructure to deliver the service. And we're generally being, being cooperative with their efforts to install the necessary infrastructure in the city right-of-way over time. Apart from that, I, I don't really have anything to change. We don't have, we don't have many substantial changes. There's, as you know, we offer a public education channel here that's reflected in, in this agreement as well. Continuation of emergency use of the system if necessary. That, that's, that's really about it. If you have any specific questions about the franchise, I'd be, I'd be glad to answer them. But with this, I don't think you'll see any substantial changes with regard to expected revenues or service.
Chris, I had one question. We talked previously about putting something in the agreement that addressed a means for them to keep up with their schedules that they're showing on this map, and essentially a map that they would provide showing the extent of their facilities. Is the density requirement a tool we will use to make sure they adhere to the schedules that they propose?
Not necessarily a tool to reflect the schedules. It, it does allow, if the build-out is, is met, they have to, they have to meet that density requirement, and that this would be a tool to ensure that they would meet it. But as far as updates to the schedules, I, I don't think there's a requirement in here that they update annually where they're at. If, if you'd like to see that, that's potentially a term we can add at this point.
I, I was getting ready to say, if, if we could add this, I think that would be good. It gives them some goals that we can measure some of their progress by, and you know, again, I know it's gonna be essentially determined by the density requirement, but it does give certain schedules. If they could do that, the map they provided tonight was very helpful. Shows some phase dates and launch dates for those services. But if we could put something in there that, you know, we could get just a little bit more information from them, it would help us in communication with their residents on where the next services would be.
Absolutely. We can, we can include that, and then the only other thing I would say to that is they are required to file for right-of-way permits as part of this. So, I mean, we do sort of know where they're at with regard to build-out, but this would be just a little bit more comprehensive view, like, like the documents they've submitted. The only other thing I wanna mention is they still have to go through their white and right-of-way permitting process, and as part of that, they have to, you know, post a bond and, and things like that. So, their right-of-way permits still have to be applied for.
Any questions? Comments?
I like Midco. I use it. I like it for internet. I don't use it for TV, but I use it for internet, and I love it.
And then I, I think that's, that's an interesting point, too. I know we had this conversation last time. Now, and you heard it from the Midco representatives tonight. This technically is about cable TV, but obviously there are other things that go with it.
You know, one thing, too, we discussed the franchise fee, whether to keep it or reduce it or abolish it. There's three things the franchise fee does. Number one, it's a cost for using the city right-of-way. Number two, it adds value to that home that it goes in front of. A house with cable TV and internet access has more value, other things being equal, than one that does not. And also, too, it does cover some of the costs that we do here for upgrades and equipment improvement, some of the salary costs that we deal with in getting these things done, getting everything set up for all these productions. Could be even used to justify our cable TV technician's salary, too. So, there, there is a certain reason, and these are the validations if you want to consider keeping the franchise fee.
And Jack, oh, I'm sorry.
I, I was thinking about the franchise fee, too. And if it is reduced, it should be, say, 1% per year. That'll give our accountant, our financial manager, time to catch up with things and plan for that. And it was said at the last meeting that the franchise fee just goes straight into the general fund if we instead send, set up a technology fund that that can go into specifically for technical needs, because we know technology fails. 10 years, 15 years, we may have to replace what we already have, and last time it was 80,000. That way, we'll have a fund for that.
One, one other thing, too, on that same topic, Brian, is what Chris mentioned, too, about the opportunity to cost-participate in Midco and extending some of these services to those areas that don't meet the density requirements. If we wanted to use some of our franchise fees there to cost-participate. Let's say we got an area that's got 20 houses per cable mile, and the city would pay whatever the cost was, X number of dollars, and Midco pays the balance, whatever that is, 80% at the time. We could use that maybe to get extensions into some of these areas that normally wouldn't receive the service until they grew and met those requirements.
But that could also be a use of that fund.
I like that idea a lot, as long as this city can guarantee that's what the money, you know, that, and of course, the maintenance of what we got and stuff. And that, you know, use it shifted around for other things.
What we would do, we would just set up a fund like we have for our street capital improvements funds or our parks capital improvement funds, and use that as an allocation to that, so then everything's accounted for.
Perfect idea.
And weren't we talking that we'll make money with this cable going through like nonprofit, through lands that, you know, we'll make, make something out of that where we don't get any, any funds?
Good point, Tim. The, the other thing is, is that tax-exempt and nonprofit properties that don't pay any property tax do have to pay the cable franchise tax, so this would expose them to a little bit more contributions to some of the services that they demand that they're exempt from paying for through the property tax.
And I don't mind paying it either. Honestly, I don't mind it.
Any other questions, comments? There's no vote on this tonight, so.
No, no. This is just for information and updating to give Chris any additional direction for the preparation of the final document, which we will have for the next meeting for approval.
The 26th?
Yes.
I just wanna say, Chris, thanks for all your hard work. It's a lot of work, and thanks for.
Thank you, and I look forward to getting this wrapped up at the next meeting.
With that, we'll go to 8.0, staff reports. Jack?
The Booster Park playground equipment was removed last week, and the new installation should be completed hopefully by, I know, later than Thursday and be open for the Booster Day event. And it's a very impressive structure, so just an update. I know we've had lots of inquiries on that, but the playground will be open by the end of the week.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, Brian?
I didn't have any meetings since last one. I could update you on our work meeting, but everyone's there. I'll just say, I'm looking forward to Party in the Park this weekend and fireworks, and though it's not, we don't have a parade and all the special stuff, it's still a great opportunity to recover from last year. And do we not have it for two years in a row?
Yeah, we had rain, rain, or cold, and then we had rain, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll be glad to be back out and get back in the community.
Yep.
That's all I got.
Okay, Shelley?
Well, I'm glad to hear that the playground equipment is gonna be done, 'cause I have seen on Facebook time and time again, what's going on over there? What's going on over there? You try to tell them, hey, it's a new playground. It is? So, very excited about that. I don't have anything for the Parks Committee, because we did not have a meeting. But I do need to make a statement to, to clear myself. The reason we went out to Gratitude Farms that day was to only do an inspection, and an inspection only. We just wanted to look around, because we've had complaints, we've had people asking questions. There was nothing against Tammy Gimble personally, never. So, if she felt that way, I apologize, and I will not resign. July 4th, I received an email from Jack stating that all four of her IUPs would be on July 12th's agenda, and none of them are on the agenda tonight. So, what she was talking about, not exactly sure. The last inspection was done in April of 2019, and if the IUP would be on this agenda, that is not a yearly inspection as stated in the IUP. Since the city did not do any inspections for the past two years, Jim Smith, as a planning and zoning commissioner, Suzanne Urkel, and I, as elected city officials, as stated in her IUP, on number seven, Ms. Gimble shall allow city officials or their agents on her property to complete random inspections to ensure compliance. And on her Facebook page, it says, "Always open." So I do not think that 4:30 on a Friday afternoon is out of question. Boarding, she's not permitted to board, yet Tammy Gimble posts on her own Facebook page that she is willing to trade horse for fence panels for boarding, and even posted a video of the dog she was boarding over Memorial Weekend. This is an ongoing issue with her and goes against the city code and her IUP. Tammy's not permitted to be a rescue, yet she has taken. Tammy's not permitted to be a rescue, yet she has taken in six surrendered dogs since January. And she has recently added a female dog with her puppies. And she is now selling for another rescue. And I'm getting all this information off of social media. Under the pretense that Tammy get that dangerous dog Lincoln, she is not permitted to be trainer or a rehab for a place for dangerous or emotional disturbed dogs, which both require the dogs to be boarded for more than 10 days. Dogs are to be transported and confined in a manor. Minnesota Statute 1721.0520 subdivision 11. Transportation of dogs and cats. Dog or cat must be transported in a vehicle equipped with ample cargo space and confinement areas. This is why a kennel for transportation is in her contract on page two. Her hours of operation, this takes me to what happened on Friday. Three different experts were asked this question. I sent out three different emails. Three different answers were given back. One said, I think by appointment is okay. Dr. Wheeler said, we have allowed it. The city attorney thinks she is within the statute as long as there's no exceptions. But being she is impound for public, that may be the exception. Her IUP also states that she is to have posted hours of operation. But on her Facebook page, because she does not have a website, it states always open. Which brings me to, one that brings me kind of close to home, horse IUP violations. Back before I was on council, I had to fight tooth and nail to keep my horse. And I was told that I had to have one continual acre of pasture land per horse. So while we were at Tammy's, I did see that she has three mares. One is a mother to a foal, so that makes four. And she also posted that the other one is with foal, so that'll make five. Tammy is permitted to have two. She is to ha, also to have one continuous pasture of three acres. I saw at least two separate pastures. And there's no way on God's green earth that those two pastures even come close to three acres, let alone an acre. Trust me, I know because I had to make an acre for my poor horse. With all the continued violations of her IUP, contract, and state law for both animal control and her horses, along with her refusing the inspection, is more than enough to immediately nullify the IUPs. What is the consensus of the council I am asking? Do we have enough of the findings of fact to direct Attorney Nelson to execute the nullification of her IUP? That's all I have.
Suzanne?
Okay, well, I'm excited about Booster Party in the Park. I love that name, Party in the Park, better than Booster Days, by the way. I've driven by the park that they're, I'm putting new playground equipment in every single day. And I'm like, when is it going to be finished? I want to go play. Let's see, what else? Oh, and I do have a question regarding water pri, water prices. Has people called the city regarding complaints about their big increase, big jump from $35 to $235?
We've had some calls on that. I can, I can give you the information on that water bill. That water bill is, the $235 is only for the past month, through the winter months. That water bill averaged $40 to $50 a month, which indicates that the issue is probably irrigation and they don't realize how much water that takes. And it's my advice to those people, use your meter as a tool. You know when your system's going to turn on, read your meter. Read it when it turns off and you'll know how much water you use. But you can, you, you can easily use 1,000 to 1,500 gallons a day watering. I did go out and look at those properties and all those lawns in that new development are exquisite. Their green is a gourd. And one, some of them in question are mowing their grass about two inches tall. It takes much more water to keep that irrigated. So the reason is, in my opinion, it's irrigation. Now, some people may claim there's errors in the meter. For the most part, and there are exceptions to every rule, but when a meter is an error, it runs slower, not faster. So it records less water. So my advice to people who have high water bills is check your meters. Make sure that, you know, you're not over excessively irrigating. Probably maybe in these kind of conditions, mow your grass at three to four inches and you'll use a lot less water to irrigate.
Thank you. And I personally don't think you should water so much when we're having a drought because actually wells out here are drying up. People are having to have their wells re-drilled deeper because they haven't been watering their grass and they are running out of water. So we have been in a drought for this whole summer. The little bit of rain we've gotten is nothing for what our wells need. So that said, I'm going to address the Friday visit, too. We are elected officials. We, we are accountable to the city residents. The staff is accountable to us. That's how it works. So when, I get a lot of calls regarding Gratitude Farms. And I would like nothing more to say. I've been there, I saw it, you're wrong, that place is immaculate. When you drive up, her property is immaculate. It's beautiful. But I don't know what's going on behind the scenes. And I feel like I need to know. I need to know because I'm getting the phone calls. I can direct them to Jack, I can direct them to the city, but they're not satisfied. They still call me back. They didn't respond, they didn't do this. I'm not happy with their answer. So I, I went up there. I, I want to say, I never mentioned animal abuse. I never mentioned that I was afraid of Tammy. I requested an escort because, one, I wanted a record of it. Two, I know she carries. And I didn't know if she would take it offense to us being there. And I, and I never got a chance to talk to her. So she wouldn't even know if I was there for a polite visit or whatever. So I, I just want to make that clear. There's no defamation going on. I never said a bad word about her or her, her, her business until, even now. I haven't said anything bad that I, that would deem it to be defamation. And I, I disagree with the city. I disagree that COVID is a good excuse to not go up there and inspect. People were going all through this whole thing. People were going to Walmart, people were going to doctors. There's, it would have been two or three people. Socially distance would have been easy, mask would have been easy. There was no, going to be no crowd. So having a COVID excuse, I don't think that's a good excuse for not inspecting for two years. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
I just want to touch on this dog thing a little bit. The thing I'm disappointed with is Shelley and Suzanne is, you guys might want to go to the league and look at their website because in there it says, anytime you go out for an inspection, you should have an administrative order of some kind to get on the property. And you guys didn't do that. And then as far as I know, you're supposed to be a licensed inspector to get in on these properties. And neither, none of you are licensed inspectors. That's the issues I have with that situation, so. And as far as my report, we had a watershed last Thursday. We approved three projects, two of them are Martin Lake Stormwater Pond Enhancement and Lakeshore Stabilization on West Martin Lake Drive. And then we okayed one for Coon Lake Fil, Filtration Basin on East Front. And we're still continuing to work on the JPA. That'll be an ongoing thing for some time. And today, the fire department had wildland fire safety. And that's all I've got. And with that?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion made?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.